First order of business, anybody get a chance to read the minutes?
Yes, I did, and I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor? Approved. All right, let's move on to first order of business. ZV five four nine five, four one zero seven Ogglethorpe Drive, Sea Island. Consider variance to the Glen County zoning ordinance section seven oh two point five to reduce the minimum front yard setback from twenty feet to five point nine to bring the structure into conformance at four one zero seven Ogglethorpe Drive, Sea Island. Parcel number zero five dash zero 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 two nine. Property is zoned R twelve, one family residential, Christopher Young, agent for Craig and Lee Williams owners. Want to hear from staff, please?
Good morning, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you today, we do have a variance for forty one oh seven Ogglethorpe Drive. Here is the site. This item was deferred from last month's Board of Appeals meeting and is back forward to you for you today. Just an update, there were some questions about when the site was built. It was built in nineteen seventy eight, and again, the reason for the variance is to prevent a possible cloud of title from possible enforcement of the ordinance. Here is the site. As you see, the garage is five point nine feet away from the front property line. And here are your possible motions, and the owner is here as well.
Okay, anybody got any questions for staff? I do have, is there, didn't I see in here, there is an active building permit on this property?
Yes.
Do we know what that permit is for? Or maybe the client can s-
Renovations.
Just renovate, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else got anything?
No.
No.
Okay, thanks, sir. Assuming a gentleman here for the applicant would like to step to the podium. State your name for the record, please, and-
My name is Craig Williams. I'm the owner, Tople Hill with Shoup Survey and Company. We've kind of taken over this project.
And we have purchased this house about a year ago from the estate of Shawl Family, I think it's Shawl, an old time family, and this project was marginal whether we bulldoze the house or we remodel it. I always prefer to leave those older homes alone and make them look good, and when we closed on the property, we were not made aware of the encroachment, and when I did the landscape plan, I noticed that, and Mr. Edenfield with Sea Island was very prompt to point that out. He has no heartburn over this. It's been there for close to fifty years, and it's, if you're on Ogglethorpe, in order to hit this garage, it would have to be three AM in the morning with one eye closed, and it's just totally out of the way. So, we're requesting that we leave it the way it is, and that's pretty much how I got involved, and we're requesting a variance to just leave it there. It's been there fifty years or so, and that's all I've got.
In your current renovation scope of work, are there any renovations to this space at all?
We have cleaned it up, and we have put some garage doors on it. It was a sort of a heavy duty covered parking area, you know, it had the roof line and had all the structure there, and all we had to do was close the front end and two sides, and we got approval from Sea Island on the garage doors that we put up there, and we did that scope of work.
So, there were walls that were added?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that answers, I actually had a question for staff, why this wasn't handled as an administrative, if it is existing, but if you did work to it, then that's my assumption as to why we're here.
You know, I think it should have been an admin deal.
But if it's an admin, then there would be, you couldn't do any renovations to it.
Oh, okay, so now I know, and it is very heavily per Sea Island. Those guys are going crazy with landscape, but that's another conversation, but it's extremely well screened, and from Ogglethorpe, you know, the first lane that it is close to is the outgoing lane moving east, and then the other lane obviously is going the other way, but there's just zero threat of this thing encroaching in anybody's way.
Excuse me a second, Chris, can you put the map up on the screen for us? Thank you. Yeah, that's it, thank you.
So, if you see Ogglethorpe out there, there is, oh gosh, maybe thirty feet of driveway just to get to the eastbound lane of Ogglethorpe. Yeah, so it's well out of the way.
And do point out, we surveyed this property in nineteen ninety four, and the building footprint, the stair is exactly the same, the roof line is the same for that garage, so structurally nothing has changed other than the side walls have been put on that carport.
Right.
So, it was a carport at one time, not a garage?
It was one of those, you know, massive, I mean, full roof structure attached to the side of the building, so it wasn't like a rinky-dink thing you see. I mean, it's a structure.
Not much over there is.
No. It's structural.
That's a fact.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it took us about twenty-two by fours since some siding to close it in, you know? It was a very massive, permanent part of the building. I have no idea how it got there fifty years ago, but I guess there's so much of that that goes on over there, I don't know, but it wasn't a big deal.
I spoke with Mr. Eddie Phil about this myself, he doesn't know how it got by either, but he said he's fine with it.
Yeah, Bill's fine with it. You know what I'm trying to do, guys, is just clean the paperwork up, you know? I don't, I've been a professional builder my entire life. I retired three years ago supposedly, and I like to do things like this. I like to take the older homes and redo them. I'm not big on bulldozing them, and I, it's just, needs to be dealt with, and that's what brings me here.
Okay, anybody else got any?
I got, I got kind of a question for staff. If we were to allow this variance, could we set a parameter where it's only for that garage and not for the rest of the Ogglethorpe side yard? You follow what I'm saying?
Oh, yes, you can make a recommendation that, to allow the variance to only apply to the garage, and then that all other accessory structures would have to meet setback requirements.
Okay.
So, you can make that motion, that all accessory structures meet setback requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Just while you're there, Chris, just from my own clarification, since this typically, I guess should have been an admin type thing, was it, I guess my question is, how did it get to us? Was it because there was an active building permit, or is that?
It was a direction of the applicant, not the, well, the prior applicant agent, they wanted to go the route of the variance.
Okay, all right, I just wanted for my own clarification.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
In the past, you know, this is still, still would qualify for admin. When David Hanley was here, you know, we did a lot of administrative variances, he was, you know, didn't mind doing them at all. When Pam Thompson was Community Development Director, she kind of frowned on those, she would prefer for the board to make any decisions on variances. I have not had an opportunity to sit down with Toby to see his feelings on whether we do admin or come straight to y'all. Again, we're kind of picking this project up from somebody else, but that may have been part of it, is in the past, we were always told just to bring it to y'all.
Okay, like I say, that was just for my own clarification, just so I know.
Before my question, just, pardon my, sir, you're the owner?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, and you are?
I'm Tople Hill with Shoup Survey, and I've taken over this project from Chris Young.
All right, thanks. I just have a question, when I read the application, the application, the reason for you being here was nothing, I knew we would talk about it, but the reason for it was like nothing about a garage. It was a cloud of title, that was the reason we were here, as I read it. And so, I just wanted to ask a question, if you bought it in July, if I remember correctly, July of twenty twenty-two, if it was a clear title, why are you concerned for a cloud of title in the future? If you have, I would have thought your attorney would have told you that situation, because I'm gonna, I'm, personally, I have a question for Mr. Tople away from this, that my attorney, when I bought property, was very clear to tell me about the easement situation that they had filed, and so I don't understand-
And I'm asking myself the same question. It was not brought up, this house went to probate court, so Mr. Shawl passed away, and then the kids got ahold of it, and you know how that goes. There was two or three of them, don't know exactly the details on that, and don't need to know, right? So, I bought it out of probate court, and it was never mentioned that there was an encroachment, and I picked it up on, Troy Anderson did my landscape plan, and he did a survey to mark the existing oaks, and I'm like, oh, look at this. So, shame on me.
No, I understand, and it wasn't-
But I didn't even know it, and nobody-
No, it's not an adversarial question at all, it was just, I'm trying to understand-
Yeah, that's what happened.
Of like at the closing, you had a closing, right?
Sure.
I don't know, I've never bought through probate, you have a closing, right?
Yes, sir, you know, Michael, I was a little PO'd when I found out that there was an encroachment, because nobody ever pointed that out, and it was alarming to me.
But you don't have a concern that you don't have a clear title, that somebody-
No, I have a clear title.
You have a clear title.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to understand, because when people come before me, and I spend the time, I go visit, and then I read the application, I'm saying, okay, I'm seeing a garage, but, and I know we're going to talk about, like I said, but I'm sitting there, I'm saying, why I'm going to go to them, why I have these people before us-
Right.
-is cloud of title, so do they have an issue with the title on the property? Is that what we're going to talk about, the title issue?
You know-
Obviously, it's not a title issue.
I think that was probably misrepresented.
Cool, I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, the house is very saleable, just the way it is, if you say-
No, I know, I visited it, I sat, and I walked around, and yeah, that kind of thing. Not on the property, but on the boundary, we don't go on the property.
And it's just, it's just one of those things that needs to be dealt with, and that's the way I like to do things. We have taken, when I started with that house, I think it leaned to the right, to the right of foot at the top. I have done extensive work, and it's absolutely beautiful.
perhaps should be put up there reflector-wise or something?
No, sir, it's not.
Okay. I couldn't remember exactly. I remember that big tree.
There's about a 5% cant in the road going away.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, it's a no-brainer. It's completely.
I remember it that way, yeah.
You'd have to be in really rough shape to hit that garage. I mean, you can't even see it from the road at this point. I mean, Mr. Edenfield, those guys, for the record, are going crazy with landscaping. And the gist of that is, they don't want to see the house from the street. And they're doing a good job of not seeing the houses.
Spending your money.
Don't get me going. So that's the reason, and I just want it cleaned up and dealt with the way you should do things. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else got anything? Okay, thank you. Assuming no one is here to speak for or against from the public. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the public comments. Any discussion from the board or?
I'm thinking that in light of all this, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZV 5495 with the connotation that we limit it to the garage building, and no other outbuildings could be built on this setback variance.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor to have a second? All those in favor? Motion approved. Got your variance, and does have the condition attached to it, is restricted to just this particular structure.
Appreciate you coming.
All right. Any other, no more comments from anybody? Everybody good? We will officially adjourn this meeting.